Okay, good evening and welcome to the October 25th, 2023 meeting of the Grafton Mass Board of Library Trustees. I'm Roger Trahan, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. As a preliminary matter, please permit me to confirm that all members in person is anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. John Babrowski.
Here.
Dana Wilson.
Dana, you're on mute.
I'll get back to her. Dr. Stephanie Teshada.
Yes.
Carrie Hogan.
Present.
And Trahan here. Dana, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure. And so, I mean, not, I'm aware that these guidelines actually are not part of the open meeting law. They're guidelines. I'm not seeing anyone in the, in the queue that's not a member. And so I'm thinking that it isn't necessary to go through the whole script of the guidelines. Are we in agreement on that? The remote meeting script, I mean, we've been here before and there's no outside people that this would need to be discussed with. It's just saves me three pages of reading.
I mean, you could summarize it real quick, maybe, just, just to say.
Yeah. All right. Well, we're meeting, we're meeting remotely due to the COVID guidelines that are posted on the town website. And I will ask that everyone use the, the hand feature raising the hand. So I know who's looking to speak so that we're not going back and forth. And that's pretty much, that's, that's pretty much the summary of things. And if anyone comes in, I will ask that if they wish to ask a question, that it would be done in the chat feature.
I just have a question. I, so I use Teams all the time and I know how to raise my hand there. I don't see where to raise your hand on here.
There's a reactions button with a smiley face. You click on that and then there's a button below the emojis that says raise hand.
Okay.
If you don't see it come up, you can click the more, the three dots and it's, it's under there.
Okay. Do I have a motion? All right, moving on to our number one. And by the way, we will, every vote will be by roll call tonight because we're remote. That's one of the requirements of the remote version of the open meeting law. So approval of minutes, September 27th. Do I have a motion to approve the September 27th, 2023 minutes as drafted?
I make a motion to approve December, the September 27th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
This is Dana. I'm trying to say something.
Well, are you, are you seconding the motion?
No, I wanted to, there was a something in the minutes that I had a question on.
No, exactly. In other words, the motion is only on the floor after a motion is seconded, then I'll open it up for discussion.
Okay. A second.
All right. So motion made by Dr. Teshada, seconded by John Babrowski. Any discussion on the motion, Dana?
Um, I just wanted to double check. There was a sentence there that said, it was about, it was talking about the evaluation of Beth. And I thought it, there was something that I wasn't in agreement with, but I didn't, I needed my memory jogged and Carrie's here, so she might be able to jog it. It said something about, it said something that, um, it said that Tim McEnery evaluated Beth, as did the Board of Library Trustees in the past. And I don't recall doing that and I don't know if I'm just not accurate.
Dana, that's probably the only thing that I, that caught my eye as well. I don't recall that that had been done.
Okay.
Okay. And, and, and so if we're not sure, we could either agree to strike that or possibly say, and possibly the Board of Library Trustees in the past.
I would strike it, but I leave that up to you. I'm, I leave that up to you. I, and you know.
Well, I don't, I wasn't here on the board to speak to it, but I don't remember that anyone agreed that that was, I guess, factual. That I only spoke to the former town administrator. So, um, Carrie, do you have any input on that? I think maybe you were on the board at the time.
Um, hi, sorry, I did both things. So, um, we did not do an evaluation when I was on the board. So I was, when I was on the board, I was on the search committee, we hired Beth, but it was Tim who hired her. And I spoke to that during the last meeting and, and he, as far as I knew, he did the evaluation. So if any evaluations were done by the trustees, it was after I had left the board.
And I recall that I, my recollection of that discussion was that the trustees were not included when discussing who did her eval. Are we okay with striking the reference to the trustees if we're not sure of that?
I, I think we should. I think it was, it was his, it was, I'm understanding it was his responsibility to do that.
Or, or, or his reported responsibility.
Yeah. I, I will agree with that. Since my hand's still up there, it's Dana. I'll agree with that.
Okay.
Get rid of my hand, I guess.
Okay. And, and I, I had one comment. Dana, is your hand still up or?
Now, I gotta get rid of it.
All right. How about you, Debbie? Did you have a question? Yes, please.
I, I'm curious, as the meeting is recorded, if we could just go back and check that. And if that's a point, I was under the impression that people had said at that meeting that the trustees did an evaluation of Beth at one point. And I could swear that trustees have told me that in person, not in trustee meetings as well.
Wow.
It was, I, I could be wrong, but it is a recorded meeting that could be, could be verified.
All right. So, so is that going to be an imposition for you to, to locate that part of the discussion?
Since this is a, an issue that keeps coming up and it's been bantered back and forth as to whose responsibility it is. I feel like that's a piece that I wouldn't strike without verifying what was in the meeting personally.
All right. Is that something that's within the purview?
Do that.
Okay. So is everyone in agreement to defer that, that the final version would defer to Debbie confirming through the video that piece? Are we in agreement?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is I don't, I don't know who said that, but I don't think it was correct. So I, I, I don't remember evaluating her. So I, that's my point of view. If someone said that, I don't know if it's accurate.
Then perhaps, then perhaps Debbie could consider wording it to reflect that someone had said that happened. Not presenting it necessarily factually, but that it was mentioned that, that, that occurred. Or it was someone's recollection that, that the library trustees were included. In other words, the minutes wouldn't necessarily reflect that that absolutely happened, but that it was discussed by someone. That, that it, that it was a recollection that it happened. I'm trying to avoid getting in the weeds here, but are we in agreement then that, that Debbie then would look at, I ducked it to shit. I'm looking at your hand being raised. Yes?
I raised my hand first, Roger.
I'm sorry. I, all right. I don't have my.
We're gonna raise hands. We need to, we need to pay attention to it.
I know. And I, I don't have my, I'm having difficulty with a lack of progressives and I'm kind of, all right.
Sorry.
I, I will defer to Carrie here.
So I guess, I don't think that we have a clear answer. We don't have, you know, everybody who was on the board previously. I think that we really need to check with the town administrator's office because they should have a record of the evaluations that were done. I know it was former town administrator, but you know, they should still have the records. So I think that, I, you know, I think that we can say that we can make a reference that it was, that it's possible that it was done previously, but we need to confirm that with the town administrator's office.
Did Dana, did you have your hand up before Dr. Teshada? I, I missed.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm getting mine down. I think.
Okay, Dr. Teshada, please.
So what I can do is I can withdraw my motion to approve the September 27th, 2023 minutes. And then we can just table approval of those minutes until next time. Um, and, and see what the feedback is off the recording. And that way we don't in the weeds anymore, but I think I have to withdraw my motion.
All right. Do, do I have a withdrawal of the second by John?
Uh, yeah, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. Yeah. In other words, my, my initial, thank you for, for unwinding that. Oh yeah. My thought process is that minutes in and of themselves don't necessarily need to describe everything that was said, but to Debbie's point, this particular issue was, I guess, important enough and has been brought up enough that it, it bears some accuracy to, to, you know, when we do approve the minutes. So we'll, we'll table that until our next meeting.
So, so again, Roger, I'm raising my hand again. So I'm totally fine with tabling it. But there's two different things here. Like one is, did somebody say in the meeting minutes that an evaluation had been done? And then separately, was the evaluation really done? So, so I think that we have to be careful about the wording.
Well, I don't necessarily, well, no, I, I would respectfully disagree that we have to find out whether it's factual. In other words, the minutes are not necessarily one of fact finding in this context. They're, they're, they're capturing the conversation. Does anyone, does anyone disagree with that?
So I, I agree with the minutes, but bigger picture, we need to find out whether or not the evaluation was done. So I think that needs to be an action item from this meeting that we need to find out definitively from the town administrator's office, whether or not an evaluation was done by the library trustees for Beth. I think it's very important for us to, to learn that.
Is that, is that something you wish me to confirm?
Yes, please.
All right. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Uh, I was just gonna mention that I think we, we got some word back from legal about future evaluations, right?
Right. In future, future. So we'll, we'll discuss that in that section. So that has to do with future, future evaluations. So.
I totally agree.
Yeah. All right. So yes, um, so, um, that I'll, I'll confirm.
Thank you, Roger.
Prior. So this is a prior town administrator of L or, or, and or board?
No, we, we, I think we're all pretty confident that the town administrator previously did best evaluations. What is not clear as to whether or not a formal evaluation was done by previous library trustees for Beth. And we want to just confirm whether that was the case.
Okay, will do. All right.
Thank you.
All right. All right. And so, um, October 16th, 2023 minutes. Do I have a motion? Or maybe it's premature. Do I have a motion to approve the draft minutes of October 16th, 2023? Presidents at the annual town meeting.
I make a motion to accept the draft meeting minutes from the town meeting on October 16th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Carrie, uh, seconded by John. Discussion on the motion, I guess, would be attendance and not in attendance. I was there, ran into you, Carrie, and Doug.
Yep.
And Dr. Teshada, were you present and was Aaron present?
No, I wasn't present.
Okay. Can anyone speak definitively? Aaron's absent right now. Can anyone speak definitively to Aaron whether he was there or not?
Aaron was not present. Aaron and Stephanie both reported their attendance to me.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So who is missing?
Me, no. I was not. I was, I was traveling for, to a funeral.
Okay.
And I was there as well.
All right.
Not at the funeral. Sorry. I was at the meeting.
All right. So, so, so I was Doug and then Carrie and John were there. Not in attendance was Dr. Teshada, Aaron and Dana. And then so then I guess that would necessarily mean that we would be in agreement to strike the section in the draft minutes. Attendance not reported as it's not been clarified. Are we, do I have a consensus to, to delete that section now that we have clarified attendance? All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing done by roll call. John Babrowski.
I.
Dana Wilson.
I, I.
Dr. Stephanie Teshada.
Hi.
Carrie Hogan.
Hi.
Trahan, I declare the motion carried unanimously five, nothing. Next item on the agenda, we have four warrants, 14 through 17. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve warrant number 14 in the amount of $3,711.98?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 14.
Okay. And.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
I did, sorry, I did have, I couldn't, I couldn't get to the reaction button fast enough. I am trying to check my notes here. I just had one question. Yeah, it was about this one and the next one. Cause they're kind of related. The, I was just curious if we knew why we have Signet Electronic Systems, which is apparently for security. I think it was mentioned, like at the end of the warrant, the full one, it says it is for security service. And then at the start of the next warrant, which I don't know if we're, we can discuss that, but there's another thing for American Alarm and Communications. So I was just wondering if that was like, make sure we weren't doubling up. It looks like Debbie has an answer.
I'm gonna do my actual hand.
Go for it.
Signet is the computer system that runs the door locks. American Alarm is the system that runs the alarm, which is wired between just the building alarm and the fire alarm. So they're, they're two separate companies for two separate purposes.
Okay. Yeah. I figured it was something like that. So that's all I had.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call. John Babrowski.
I.
Dana Wilson.
Hi.
Dr. Stephanie Teshada.
Hi.
Carrie Hogan.
Hi.
Trahan, I declare the motion carried unanimously five, nothing. Do I have a motion to approve warrant number 15 in the amount of $3,286.8?
I make a motion to, to approve FY24 warrant number 15 in the amount of $3,286.8.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing them. Oh, yes. Go for it.
Just another minor for clarification. There was, there's a company called NAD Grid Corp. And I was just curious what that was, if we knew. It's not National Grid. I don't think it's NAD Grid. N A D.
I think that has to do with cataloging new materials that come in.
Okay. All right. That's, that's enough for me.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing then all those in favor by roll call. John Babrowski.
I.
Dana Wilson.
Hi.
Dr. Stephanie Teshada.
Hi.
Carrie Hogan.
Hi.
Trahan, I declare the motion carried unanimously five, nothing. Warrant number 16. Do I have a motion to approve warrant number 16 in the amount of $9,247.99?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 16 for $9,247.99.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I'm anticipating John to quickly weigh in.
Uh, I actually don't think I had anything on this one.
Okay. All right. And any further discussion, Dana? Did you have discussion?
No.
Oh, I thought you were, okay. Hearing then, all those in favor by roll call. John Babrowski.
I.
Dana Wilson.
Hi.
Dr. Stephanie Teshada.
Hi.
Carrie Hogan.
Hi.
Trahan, I declare the motion carried unanimously five, nothing. All right. Warrant number 24. Do I have a motion to approve warrant number, no, pardon, I was looking at FY24, pardon. Warrant number 17. Do I have a motion to approve warrant number 17 in the amount of $4,414.93?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 17 in the amount of $4,414.93.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call. John Babrowski.
I.
Dana Wilson.
Hi.
Dr. Stephanie Teshada.
Hi.
Carrie Hogan.
Hi.
Roger Trahan, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Okay. Ongoing business item number three, MPLCP Building Program and Grant. An update. Would that be you, Debbie?
Um, I can just let you know that William Blake has assumed all of the building responsibilities in Beth's absence.
Okay.
Um, we have not had, um, really any contracting, anything going on in the last several weeks. So I don't know that, that he would have much to report, but that, those are all being deferred to William at this point.
Okay. Thank you. MHC CPC time meeting update, that 74,000 or so Community Preservation Committee warrant article passed with flying colors at the October 16th meeting. And so next item is going up to bid. I believe that's William. He's gonna go to go out to bid on that. And again, the community preservation funds are always the last to be spent on these. So we'll see how much that bid comes in at. And I, I'm not sure Debbie, whether you want to keep that as a standing agenda item. Probably. I mean, if, if we're going out to bid, it probably makes sense to, to keep it on there.
Yes.
All right. Okay, FY20.
I, I did want to add on that.
Yeah.
Just to make trustees aware, the Massachusetts Historic Commission called the other day looking for Beth and had some concerns about various items that went along with the grant that has been deferred to William and Evan. And Evan is taking the lead on that.
Okay.
I don't know exactly. I didn't take the call and I'm not, that's not in the purview of my.
Okay. You mean, we, we can't add one more thing to your list of tasks?
Uh, no, I have to sleep.
I know. I, I know. As a stepping aside, I have to give you kudos for, for everything you've been doing. With, so I throw a million emojis, thumbs up your way. So.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Please, Dana, about the historic or CPC?
Yeah. Should we be concerned about that? Because that grant is pretty important that we get, that we maintain that. That's a $70,000 grant.
Yes.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm just, I don't know, I'm a little concerned. That's all.
So here's the thing, if they called and it's in William and Evan's hands, we could always just get an update from them.
Okay. All right. Okay. Good. I just.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that was extraordinary, that grant. So you all know that.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
The amount we got. And so we need that. Okay. Good. Good idea. Yeah, absolutely agree, Dana. So I guess, Roger, what I would just ask, if, so, so we know, you know, Beth is going to be out for, you know, a period of time. And William is taking over responsibility for all any, you know, building updates. We obviously are waiting for the remediation for, you know, the room. Could we just, you know, if, if William's not able to attend our meeting and give an update himself, can we just make sure that we get an update from him in advance of the meeting? Because we really are in the dark, to be honest with you, as far as what's going on, other than, you know, going to the library and seeing, you know, the nothing, nothing's happening.
So I, I can follow up with a, with a brief email as far as deliverables on, on, on whether the historic, whether the mass historic was addressed and whether that's moving forward. In other words, making sure that there's no issues outstanding that would compromise that those committed funds or awarded funds.
Or anything like, just, just everything. Cause there, that's just one particular thing, but just in general.
Right. And so, and so we're speaking specifically to the mass historic. I can, I can speak with, we're double back with William on that. And trust that he's going to follow up as he has. And Evan has with all the other deliverables, working with, with, with Debbie. Um, yes, Dana, you had a question?
I think, I think. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. My question was, I'm also very much concerned with the remediation and what's happening. Because I have been.
That's another agenda item.
Okay, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, can I just say, I, I thought, okay, so maybe I misunderstood. I thought that Carrie was saying it would be good for us to have something in writing from him regarding what is going on with that, with that.
So Debbie, I see your hand up and I was going to call on you regardless about the updates that may and may not, I don't recall, have gone to the trustees as a whole or not.
Um, we meet with William and or Evan every Wednesday, the department heads and myself. I can get whatever updates going forward on the next meeting, whatever updates. I was looking forward to that today and then they were not, they were unable to make it. And then I can also, so I can look through the, the agenda that's been posted, get whatever updates you would want from that and deliver those. I can also request, I'm noting action items as I'm taking notes and can have William send a report to the trustees regarding an MHC follow-up and the, and any of the other, anything else that comes up tonight. If you want to know from him, I can send that to him and copy the trustees on that as well, so that he can send a report as to where, where we are.
That would be excellent. That would be really helpful, Debbie, that just in general, like anything that he's working on. If he could just keep us abreast of what's happening and anything that we might need to be concerned about or, you know, vote on or anything, that would be, that would be great.
All right. Okay. Are we ready to move on to FY24 budget? Debbie.
Hi, again, most I ever get to talk. I spoke to Eileen LeBlanc. She is our head of library accounts. She prepared a budget report for me that I could just kind of reference. Um, we are at 47% for FY24 at this point. And while that seems higher than normal, it is coming because of these contracted expenses that Beth mentioned at the beginning of the fiscal year, like Biblioteca, which is our checkout services, CW Mars. Those are those large, big ticket items that we had at the beginning of the, the fiscal year that take a big chunk of the budget right away. Other than that, all the other categories seem to be on track. And I think that's something that kind of shakes out as the year, the year goes on.
Right. And one of the things about the budget, I'll, I'll look at her speaking, then I'll mention something. Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, just a question. So when does the budget process start? Cause I know that's a big item that Beth would typically work on. So, um, when, when, cause I know, you know, obviously it starts July 1st is the new fiscal year, but is it February that?
I thought, doesn't it really truly start with the templates in December? Debbie, if you could clarify that, what is, what is in process thus far? As far as templates and maybe either with town accountant or others?
It has, the budget process has already begun. And when Beth left, I think Roger sent and forwarded the email, she'd left a list, an extensive list of tasks. On that was. On that was that the budget, um, the budget draft is due in December. Um, and noted the location of it, Eileen, um, head of our accounts is looking at reviewing update and updating expenses, Mary Lauria is involved, um, and then the union is going to be reporting to Evan and William, the, um, the union pay increase for the following year. Um, so it, we have spoken, that was the first, the first week that she was out, Evan and William came, both came to our meeting and they said that they will be handling that and that this is kind of just the first round of bu- the budget submissions in December, um, and that they would be working with us, working with department managers, working with um, tech services and accounting to make sure that we have that at, that ready to go.
So Debbie, I have a question for you, and and this may be a loaded question that you may not be familiar with, and this is more my recollection from prior time meetings, and there are times that, that when budget items have been, um, regarding salary increases for union, that if I'm not mistaken, that sometimes those have been separate warrant articles, funding articles to account for those increases. And I'm not sure if, in other words, to account for the current fiscal year, in other words, we can budget in the library budget. Um, so what happens this year to account for that? Is that, is that something that's funded at a time meeting, or does that just come out of our monies that? In other words, do we find ourselves in an underfunded position in FY twenty-four? Or this is the current fiscal year then sort of gathered up and then we make up for it with a separate funding article from a different source at town meeting that is not the library line items?
That's a good question. That's not, um, I've only been doing this job for a year, so I, and I've never, the budget process is, is Beth. Nobody, nobody else is involved in that, so typically, we're getting involved in it this year because we have to, so.
Something, it's, it's something that we can keep our eyes on as far as what number that is compared to what was budgeted, I'm not sure if the FY twenty-four salaries were budgeted to anticipate that or whether they were budgeted not to, and then we find ourselves trying to find this, this chunk of money to represent, um, you know, FY twenty-four. That wasn't appropriated, so.
Um, that's, that's something that they can work on, I know that we have, Beth has mentioned in the past, and the trustees that have been around for a little bit can attest to this too, that um, the budget probably does need some tweaking, as we've seen our energy costs are higher than what they should have been, even though we have a large credit that's going to run out at some point. We have this revolving account that's running out of money because the, we're not, people aren't making copies anymore, I think that the budget in general probably needs, it might be good to have fresh eyes on it for Mary Lauria to be working on it, for Evan to be working on it, um, just to, if if we're constantly taking the accounts as they are and then just moving them to the next year, that may not be serving us, because we're finding out that we are short, you know, at, in certain areas and, and relying on state aid, and I know that that's what it's there for, but I mean, this is just my opinion from what I've heard, um, that we have had those issues where, um, like building maintenance has been more than we anticipated, so those are things that may be projected differently and it would be good for the town accountant to be involved in it, which she's going to be.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so we ready to move on to I T. What is, I I say this tongue-in-cheek Debbie, what is failing this month? No, I'm just kidding, um, so, what, 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 what's the status of our, uh, I T systems and and everything? Seems like everything is related to I T in some, some way, even the doors and locks and all sorts of things, so.
That is on my, the first thing on my list, on the door locks, Beth reported at the September meeting that, um, some people's key cards were not working properly and attributed it to user error, and what happened was that the same issue happened this month when we had professional development. Um, there's, it's, it was not user error, people know how to key themselves in, um, and there's just something that's off with how, I I'm assuming it's how people are coded. Um, some people have full access, some people have limited access on their cards, and if they're coming in at a different time than usual, it may be something that the system is not. These are regular employees that come in every day and know how to use their cars, um, and the system is just not terribly user-friendly, so we know it on professional development days now, we're just going to have people, um, ring the bell, their card's not working. Um, this is a cut that Signet and they do charge quite a bit of money to come out and, um, provide service, so we're gonna just do the best that we can with that.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so, so, so if somebody, so, so if somebody uses their card, it messes up the system, but for certain people, or?
No, um, I think Beth had mentioned prior to that, that somebody from the town had come in with a key and it threw off the system, um, nobody's done that recently. It, it's something with our professional development days that when you go in the computer system to override it so that the doors don't unlock at ten A M. Because on those days, we open at two P M, um, that it's doing something to those people's key cards, is our best guess.
And then Signet has to come out and fix the cards?
Um, we're trying to get Jonathan from C M D, he's our tech guy, to take a look at that, Aaron has it, has, um, offered to take a look at that in the past too. Um, just to see if, it's a programming system, and at this point, if we know what it is, then the employees can just rainbow. Instead of us coming out to reprogram things and paying a large service fee for days that we specifically have on the calendar, we know that if we override the door locks to not open on time, then those key cards are probably not going to work.
So Debbie, um, um, am I correct in saying that when we have Signet or whatever company come out, that this isn't a a service agreement that we actually have to pay hourly and probably quite expensively each time they do report?
It's not hourly, um, but it is a significant, I, you could go back through warrants or invoices, I could have that looked up, but it, it's a significant charge, it does not see, feel like a regular service charge, um, and I think that may have been why the system was affordable, you know how they, they balance those things out.
So, so Debbie, just, so everybody's card is working now, it's just on that one professional development day, some people's cards didn't work and then they had to ring the bell, but day to day, people's cards are working properly, we don't need to have Signet come out. Okay, thank you.
And and I'll ask my fellow trustees, is, does anyone have access to the building right now? I know that between the flood and then there was an electrical issue or an outage on June sixth and then other issues where it would have been be- beneficial for, I mean, because we're elected, we're all living in town. I'm not sure if we even have a policy to cover it about what circumstances a- actually have arisen that would cause one or more of us to also want to have cards, since we are trustees and oversee the building, um. Has that been a discussion in the past? It just seems like it, it it could be useful i- if something occurred off hours and and we were called, I, I-
We don't have access Roger, that, um, I don't know if there was a reason why we can't, but, um, we, we don't.
Hmm. We don't need to discuss tonight, I, um, it's just a matter of there, I could reasonably foresee the need for one of us to benefit from having access based on, um, a few calls that I've received, uh, you know, in the past as far as, you know, having to respond on site on two occasions, one in June, one in August. I'm just right down the street and I was available, and so, um, anyway, all right, we could, we could have that discussion for another day, but.
I, I feel like in, before we had the new, the, you know, the, the new security system, I feel like maybe there was like a key, I don't know, do you like, like when Diane was like the, the chair, that maybe th- there was access, but um, but currently we don't.
Okay, all right, it's something that I, I'd like to visit at some point, I I could reasonably foresee that, uh, the need to to have access at some point for various reasons, um. All right, so is that the, any other I T issues, um?
Um, is a, a follow-up on laptops, uh, we were going to start checking out laptops by the end of October and then with, um, Beth's departure, the library department has decided to revisit it, possibly in November, December, just to let things settle down and, and shake out a bit, um. So that's, that's still in progress, I did neglect to mention on the budget update, I had a note for myself that I do need um, two trustees to sign bills tomorrow before four P M if possible.
I'll be around.
Okay.
I'll be around.
That would be perfect, thank you, and that's, that's all I have on I T.
Okay, all right, public library capital campaign update, um, Dana.
Hi. Okay. We're kind of exhausted, but, um, we had the big, um, as you probably know, and I thank all the library staff and everyone that really went way and beyond to help us, we had our big, we had our donor appreciation party on the fif- on the fourteenth at the library and it was well attended and, um, it went off really well. We had many people, um, it was kind of cool because we had a lot of people, um, R S V at the last minute and, um, we also had, it was just like, it's kind of like what you wish would happen really happened, people were chatting away and talking to each other and when they entered the building, we had to get them up to go up, to go upstairs, they were just chatting away and or durs were passing and whatnot, so it went really well, so my thank you to all the staff and to everybody that helped, and I really appreciate it, and the caterers, we think, did a good job and Carrie worked really hard, we made, um, we made floor arrangements and I had he- help from Sue Cardozzi, who's, um, a co-chair of the Small Stones Committee, she and a friend of hers, Eileen, really made a lot of them, so it went really well. And then, you know, everybody pitched in, my son was vacuuming and, um, we I learned a lot and stuff I can't, we just, our library is so beautiful, but it really does require a lot of work and I know we've been talking about this, but we really do need custodian help and, um, that, that's all I, you know, we did things that were, we, we made it look good. And so we, of course, enjoyed doing that, but it went really well, so thank you to everybody and, um, I don't know if Carrie has anything, Carrie worked really hard, Don Anderson and Doug.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to, so thank you, you again, like, you know, the library staff and, and, um, Doug, you, who isn't on the call today and Donnie Anderson, who are also, but a really huge thank you to Dana, like, you know, you put so much time and effort into it and it was lovely, it really was a really, really great event and you're just capping off, you know, the, um, million dollars that was raised and, you know, a lot of you, love and care put into it, so, you know, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Debbie helped to, Debbie was helpful too on that day.
Oh, Debbie, I actually see some of the little gift bags behind Debbie, um, so we still need to-
Yeah, we have to talk about that o- offline, but we had a great time, so thank you to everybody and to all our donors, they were very generous.
It was, I will have to say it was a raving success, I did not attend, um, but one of the things that, that, among other things that have come up, and the discussion isn't over yet on this, but I I needed to touch, uh, based on a couple of items, and it had to do with, um, the scope and limits of our role, uh, individually, um, as trustees, and we're, we're collectively uh, in charge of the building and oversee the building. And I know that, um, on that day, there was some question of whether to close early or whether to move items around that would have impeded, um, public access, uh, to various parts of the collection before we had, we had closed, and I know that, um, you know, we hadn't, um, we hadn't voted as a, as a, uh, as a board, um, you know, to, to close, in other words, the and there was a request that morning, uh, that that came in that, well, maybe we should close early, and so it was not an emergency situation that would have caused, um, the library to close early.
Hmm.
Um, and then the, uh, another piece is that, um, you know, our, our role as, as trustees really, um, would actually overstep to individually try to, to move stuff around and i- i- impede the library staff and the public in that, and so, um, you know, call that, um, a scolding, but it's just one of those things that we need to be very mindful of, you know, what our roles are and what our limits are as far as individually acting, um, you know, um, to, to try to, to, I I I know it, everything was, you know, for the purpose of, of, of the function and related to the library that night, but I think we need to be mindful of, of, you know, not to overstep. So, um, if, if anyone has any comments about that. All right, um, and, um, the other thing is that I will be, um, this is kind of unrelated, but kind of related, um, that I had received from the town clerk recently, and I'm, I'm overdue on sending it out. The, this M I I A, there's a document on, um, operating meetings smoothly, and it's, it's actually a code of conduct, okay?
Point of order, are we still on the capital campaign update?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, all right, and so, um, and and there's another similar document out of the Attorney General's Office, it has to do with meetings, but I think that from a board develop, this is just a starting conversation, but from a board development standpoint, um, and again, to, to Dr. Teshada's point of order, um, anytime we are in a meeting, um, you know, there, there is various, uh, codes of conduct within meetings, but there's also, um, you know, various social norms and and codes of conduct that are expected of us, uh, you know, outside of meetings as well, and so, um, I guess for now, I'll leave it at that. Um, but you know, we just need to be mindful of, um, you know, um, what our role is, uh, collectively and individually, so, um, so I'll, I'll get those, uh, documents out to you as well, and so, um, any further capital campaign updates that don't pertain to the function, I know that there was a whole bunch of routine gaming tables, there were instruments and things like that, um, any updates on?
Sure, I'll, I'll give an update on that, um, I'd be glad to, um, what is, what we've been, um, yes, we had two gaming tables that have been set up outside on the patio and, um, we double-checked with Allison, Allison was concerned about them and they, we did that, do them, so that was good. And we've had all the, all the gardens have been updated. So we're waiting on a couple things, we're going to be working and finishing the lighting project. And then we are waiting to find out, um, from the town if we are able to put the musical instruments in, in the ground. And, um, we're hoping to do that before the frost comes, if we can't, if, if we can't do it probably by the second week in November, we'll have to wait until the spring, so that was one thing, um, that we're waiting for, that, that would be my update on it, I, Doug has been working on that.
So let me, let me ask you, what, if I, if, i- in bigger picture, how much, what's the, um, what's the fund balance of the capital campaign right now?
You know what, um, you know what? I, we've been over this a few times, so, um, I, we have been over this several times and it is, it is public knowledge. Doug would have that information, and I am more than happy to talk to you about the capital campaign and what, and you know, what it's all about.
Hmm.
More than happy to do that.
Right.
But I don't really think we need to do this at this meeting, I'd prefer to do it another time.
No, no, it's actually a simple innocuous question about what the fund balance is, and and I guess, um.
I think Doug can tell us that, we are still, um, I know I saw that I had some agenda items to work on because there's some, I do believe the capital campaign still has some outstanding bills to help the town with.
And then, al- along with the capital campaign Dana, as far as that fund balance, I guess it, it's encumbered funds now that, um, that money is kind of frozen, the money that was voted on at town meeting is potentially being used for the cupola. Um, does that kind of come out separately? How does that work?
What are you talking, I'm, I'm confused.
In other words, the, the, the capital campaign was one of the funding sources.
We already, that money's been used.
Okay, so that's, all right, so.
I think most of that money has been used, we funded the ability for the estimate to be done. Part of that was also, part of that was also, um, the architect who was, um, I can't remember his name, I think his name is Kim, he's King, he's the guy that worked on this like twenty years ago. Um, we're paying for his professional services, because he's gonna, my understanding, he's going to be supervising a lot of the work. So that, that will be done, that's what we agreed to.
Okay.
So none of the money has been frozen, it's, was an agreement that was made.
So that's actually spent then?
Some of it has been spent.
All right. Um, all right, moving forward, Small Stones, um, Dana.
Um, well, I guess, um, I'm not exactly sure- Um, well, I guess um, I'm not exactly sure, I'm, we we're trying to find out, I, the group is um, we're a bit, we're concerned about whether or not we'll be able to use the community room since we're six weeks out from when the um, the group has to like start preparing to get into the, you know, they have to it takes two or three days for the, for the exhibit to actually be put up. So we're waiting to hear
I have an, I have an update. I have an update. Okay. And I, I'm, I was looking, I was looking if, if this specifically was going to be an agenda, it was an agenda item um, tonight separately, but I don't think it is. So
Well, I got one from, I, I did get an update because I did talk to William Blake.
Is that today?
Um, it was a few days ago.
All right. So I, I actually spoken with him.
Sorry, point of order, Dana had the floor.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Tashida. Uh, I stand corrected. I Okay, I'll, I'll, it's a visual thing. Thank you.
I can give it to, I can give it to Roger. So he can go.
No, 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 please finish. I, I
No, I, I don't have anything more to say. I just, my, I had talked to him um, a couple, maybe two days ago, a day or so ago. So I don't, my update may be different from what you have.
All right. Um, if you're, if you're, if you're uh, yielding the floor to me, then back, back to me. Um, all right. So it, the, the, for those of you who aren't familiar, there was a second claim. It had to do with the fact that the rugs started lifting up. And so and maybe it's fortuitous that that happened or else we would have done the full repair, gotten everyone moved back in and then the rugs would have lifted up. We would have to move everyone out for a second repair. So it's sort of like claim A and claim B. And so um, William is um, speaking with that, in our insurance folks, our insurance agent to, to get with the insurance company to really um, nail them down on, on the timeline for a payment. Okay. So um, on that second piece of the claim, uh, William told me today that it will be, should be no more than five business days from today that he should have an ETA on the full repair date. Okay. Don't know what that date will be. Um, I'm hoping that, in other words, the, the, the contractors and the product are lined up and just waiting for the insurance payment. So I'm, I'm hoping that um, when that is um, in process, that it won't be a um, a lengthy um, um, work schedule, but he told me that it should be five business days that he would anticipate uh, following up with that, with an ETA on that work being completed, um, what date that would be. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm taking that to mean all of the work, not just the community room, but the children's room and, and all the other areas um, that were compromised and are no, not fully functional. So Debbie, did you uh, have any um, update? That's my, that was my today discussion. Did you have, do you have anything? Um, it, does that jive with what your current understanding of things are?
Um, I have not heard the part about five business days. I was on the call for the initial walkthrough when remediation work was supposed to start, like reconstruction was supposed to start immediately following um, them tearing things up and that didn't happen. Um, staff at this point are probably projecting, just looking at the calendar, the department heads are meeting today and even if they get started, you're looking at, we have um, November with holidays, December with holidays. Um, children's room staff is not planning on even starting to program until probably the first of the year at this point. There's no guarantee that this room is going to be completed in any kind of timeframe. So I, I there's nothing that any of us here at the library can do. Um.
Right. And so, so right, in other words
and the, the insurance company. Because what, what was said originally in the first meeting is not what has, has happened.
Okay.
And several areas of, in our daily functioning has been really impacted by this. So we, we understand all the concern.
All right. So I, 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 I'll do a point of order on myself. I just realized as I'm looking at the agenda that I, I, I commingled the Small Stones um, exhibit with two items down flood remediation. So um, so even though we've already spoken about that, I, I'll, I'll ask Dana to, to double back on the Small Stones exhibit. Whether there's anything you haven't mentioned regarding that exhibit that may be on, may not be related to the remediation. How that's going, um, whether
Well, I, um, no, I guess. I don't, I don't know how to say this. I guess um, I hear, I hear what, I completely understand. And I appreciate what Deb, Debbie has just said because um, I guess what I'm hearing from you, Roger, is that in about five days, we may know something.
We, we will, i- i- in other words, five days is the um, the anticipated date that we, in no more than five business days, should the insurance matter be cleared up? It's my understanding. And, and then that would then set in motion that they're ready to go. And, and so once they're ready to go, the contractors would would likely throw an ETA at William and then he would communicate it to us.
Okay. All right. Well, that's, I, I think, yeah, okay, that's, I hear what
Don't know what that ETA is going to be, but it, it would allow us to knock on wood. Um, for the library to plan, you know, with the programming again, because we can't, yeah. And I don't know what the date, you, you think in January, Debbie?
I'm, I'm just, I mean, I know
No, Dana, hold on a second. Debbie, you had mentioned um,
Um, I know the children's, the children's room is not going to plan on doing any programming until January, just because if you're looking at construction and um, typically how construction goes.
Okay.
Um, and how long it takes and you're looking at two months with several holidays in it. It's if you're, they're, they're not going to start planning programming probably until, until January. Um, we have, we have, the, the fact of the matter is too on this, that we have no guarantee. We cannot guarantee anything and the staff that is on hand at the library day to day does not have answers. We have no answers. Um, so continuing for um, people to come in and ask us when this room is going to be available for events, for programs, for, we, it's very frustrating. Um, and we just, we don't have answers. We're sorry. Uh, there's nothing that we can do. All that we can do is direct people to William and all William can do is keep calling the insurance company. And that we're just not getting anywhere on it. And it's, it's the number one source of tension and frustration right now. Um, is that we just can't get these things running for people that desperately want to do programs and that the kids that want to get, we have crying babies. You know, we have toddlers falling on the floor because they're sad that the children's room is not open and
Again.
Our staff is, is taking it hard too. So we're all just trying to do what we can do. So if you, if you come in and you have concerns about that, please, please tread lightly and be kind to staff on that because we can't, this is out of our control.
All right. Thank you, Debbie, for all your hard work on that. And I, and I thought that my moving on to continue the flood remediation talk was assuming that these small stones um, and um, the small stones um, that you didn't have any other input at this time, Dana?
Um, well, all I can say is that I, the committee is very concerned and I hear what you said, but I have to agree with Debbie. I would um, I have no, we have no assurances that by, just by December third that, that, the, the work will be done. So I think the, the committee is, is we're gonna, we're meeting next Monday and we're, we're talking about what we can do. So I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
So there's not, not much more I can say.
Okay. Thank you, Dana. Um, and, and Carrie, I, I stepped in line in front of you um, regarding Friends membership and update. Um, when we spoke about flood remediation, that kind of overlapped the s- uh, Small Stones Festival concerns. Um, but Carrie, as far as Friends um, update.
So ju- ju- just a request, um, on the agenda going forward, if we could just call it Friends update. I mean, I'm not really giving like the membership updates, just call it Friends, you know, it's just, it's just the Friends. Um, so, yeah, hey, I mean, it's not, you know, um, but, um, so you, and, and I, I guess I just wanted to say, Debbie, like, you know, you, we really understand, like, it's very, very tough, you know, uh, uh, you know, having that construction in place and it's impacting everything. Um, so it impacts the Friends as well. So not having those rooms. So so I can only imagine how frustrating it is, you know, for, for you and all of our staff. And I, you know, very sympathetic to that. And, and it's frustrating, you know, to know that it's, you know, that they tore apart the room and then we just have to wait for it. But but you, with regards to the Friends, as we talked about at our last meeting, the Friends did um, you know, um, allow you, our, our children's room to basically set up their base of operations in our Friends corner. Um, which, you know, I know is helpful um, in, and, and it's a lot smaller space than what they're used to, but you know, they do have a, a little home there. But that, of course, does hamper, you know, the, the Friends, you know, ability to do some of the the normal things that they do. Um, so the upcoming event is um, Grafton Celebrates the Holidays. I'm actually really curious to hear your update, Debbie, because you know, I know that's impacted as well by the, you know, by, by that. Um, one of the other items for, that the Friends would like to work on is the vending machine, but of course, we have to keep that on hold until, you know, until, you know, everything else is, is um, kind of uh, settled there. Um, but the, the Friends are planning to participate in Grafton Celebrates the Holidays, doing the book bundles, you know, selling, you know, um, selling items to, you know, to raise money for the Friends, on your, for, for the library. And the, um, and as mentioned on the calendar here, the next Friends meeting is on November fourteenth at seven thirty. Um, that's going to be via Zoom. But other than that, there really aren't a lot of updates, you know, um, at this point in time.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Um, the, the last, I, I know we blended the flood remediation. It, these are kind of, these activities are kind of tied into one another. The DPW working on drains. I see Dana's name attached to this, but I'm not sure. Dana, did you have an update or? Or was that? Debbie, I, 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 it's on the agenda, DP, DPW to work on drains. What would be the follow up?
Um, ha- can you hear me?
Yeah.
My concern, I, I have a huge concern on that and I hope it won't just be washed over, but my concern is that um, I was really even worried last weekend because of the flood, the um, all the rain we're getting and the potential flooding. My understanding um, from a conversation I had with Beth, um, it was that she, she was waiting for the DPW to um, basically snake the drains that are underneath the building to ensure that there's nothing, there's no no clogging there or anything. But that wasn't, it, 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 she wasn't, the library wasn't top of their priority. So I brought that up because I'm concerned because I think that it was her, her, it was a historic rainfall, but we know that the climate has changed and the rain, you know, our weather pattern has changed. So I think we really need to get, we need to get that work done. I'm not sure how we do it, but that was my, that's why I brought that up.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Dana. And then I will then segue that into asking Debbie, I, I, please refresh my memory whether or not there were recent emails that were circulated that spoke to this. Do you recall anything, Debbie? I, I, I thought that, I, I recall some vague recollection about whether this is an action item or whether Dana, I only read it as a um, as your concern, I mean, it's a valid concern, but as your concern to, to discuss this on the agenda um, and whether or not there's any action.
Well, I think we need to take action is what I'm saying because Beth, um, this is before Beth did her leave of absence. But she was concerned about it um, because it wasn't being done. And as a trustee and a member of the community, I'm concerned because we're, we're now getting what would, damage that was done is going to be repaired. I hate to see that happen again.
Right.
And I think we need to have those drains snaked and someone needs to make sure that happens. And I'm not, I don't know who does that, but it, it, I don't, it definitely, action should be taken.
Okay. I mean, I, I could, I could shoot a, uh, an email to William, um, if everyone's okay with that, just down that particular item. I think there the Assistant Town Administrator and Town Administrator's um, activities have been focused mostly on you know, the, the running of the library itself and staffing and uh, versus the outside of the building. But um, again, that is um, something I can um, uh, email William about and ask um, whether DPW is, is, whether that's on their to-do list.
And I think we need to increase the priority of it too.
Right.
Absolutely.
Because I'm a, I really am, Roger, last weekend, I was like, oh my God. But we were lucky. I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a person that is um, you know, I'm not overzealous, but I'm, I was concerned.
All right.
So Roger, I don't know if you noticed, but I, I raised my hand and tried to
I'm sorry. I, you know, I, I apologize. You know what it is? This, I, I got, I got other icons on the bottom of my screen that you don't see that it's same color and this other stuff that it's just a poor color and that hand is way too small on Zoom. So um, yeah.
So I just, I just wanted to, to um, su- support what Dana was saying. So like, the reason why we're in such a mess right now or possibly is because of the issues with the drains. So we, so it, it's not really us as trustees that should be work with the DPW. It, but it should be on us to ask William as the point person for the, you know, library issues to have him make sure that we, that he follows up with the DPW to work on that. So I think we need to keep, this should be an agenda item and it should be something that we follow up with William um, in Evan, to make sure that it, it gets done.
All right. Is everyone, by consensus, everyone okay with me just shooting a quickie email to, to see what, what, what's going on in the ETA on that? And Debbie, um, you had your hand up.
Yes, um, I, as I mentioned earlier, that I can reach out to William regarding these things.
Oh, all right.
Issues, add this as a concern and then speak to him. And if nothing else, um, he's, he's, comes to the building quite often.
Right. So you don't mind doing that even though it's
No, it's, that's fine. It's, it's, if it's pardon the pun, if it flows along with everything else that we're doing with the, the building.
All right.
And ju- just related to that as well, the drains, um, so my understanding is that um, what is covered by insurance is, has nothing to do with the, the doors, but um, but I think we really need an assessment um, as, as to whether we need to enhance, replace, what have you, the doors. Because if we're doing all, like we're spending, you know, we're losing our library for all these months. You know, spending all this money and effort through, you know, through the insurance to get it fixed. If there's an issue with the doors that, or there's something that can be done to try to help mitigate this if we did have a similar flooding situation in the future, we really need to look at that. And so we, we need to know, like, do those doors need to be reinforced? And then we can talk about funding sources. But first, we need to know, like, you know, are those doors sufficient? I don't think all of them are.
Okay. All right. Yes, Debbie.
I, I'm going to use my real hand. I can reach out to CTA. Um, there's a technician that's come out several times that I, I know him now. He's been out here enough, um, named Rob, that I can talk to him about that and see what, what the doors are. What they're, they're rated for. I believe they, that Beth has stated in the past though, that they are, they were what should have been able to withhold that, not withhold that, but should have been able to withhold normal rain. I, I don't know that you're going to get flood doors. So I don't, I don't know. I can ask him and see what's available. Um, and, and but I think it's just extenuating circumstances and kind of literally the perfect storm of what happened that day. Too, and the, the staff said it, it held the water for a while and then it just
But to Dana's point, with climate change, um, you know, you know, we're gonna likely see more large storms like this. So um, it might be that we do not, we might decide not to replace the doors, but I think we need to know, you know, you, is that something that um, is that something that could have mitigated this, you know, situation? And then you know, what would the cost be, you know, of those? Like, if we were going to invest in um, stronger doors to prevent this type of damage from happening in the future. I think it's something we have to at least consider.
Okay.
I just have a quick, a quick comment. I think I just want to make sure, because I know the minutes and all of that. I don't think we know why the flooding happened. It, we don't know if it was because of the drainage. That's all I was going to say. That is not, I don't think that's a fact. That's all I was saying. Thank you very much. Thank you, Debbie, for staying on top of all of this.
Are we ready to move on to uh, Grafton Celebrates the Holidays?
Sure. Um, we have Sure. Um, we have booked, um, her name is Diana Hedgecomb. She is a storyteller. Uh, she's gonna be doing two thirty-minute winter storytelling sessions. Uh, we have the Girl Scouts who are gonna have their gingerbread houses on display. Um, at this point, we're not counting on the community room being available, so we'll be doing the storytelling sessions. Um, we're gonna kind of keep it a little bit smaller. We have cut out any arts and crafts because uh, those being run by volunteers has not been, um, they don't have the the same attention to um, the building. They've had glitter and glue and paint and things. It's been a little bit of a mess, um, in the past, and we're just gonna kind of tone it down a little bit with just the storytelling, the gingerbread houses, um, and just be here for whoever stops by. We'll have those. They're they're already on the schedule. Um, I, we have staff that are booked for the um, event already, so we're we're ready to go.
Yeah, I think I I think that, yeah, a- along the lines of the uh, Celebrates the Holidays, I think one of the favorite attractions was the gingerbread house, you know, and and uh, but it's a, it's I I I I look forward to the fact that it it affords people the opportunity uh, to take out books and and other materials and maybe even see the library for the first time. And it isn't just Graftonites, you know, um, people from all over come to Grafton Celebrates the Holidays, so.
We don't look out people to check out books on the Sunday of Grafton Celebrates the Holidays.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I did not know that. Oh, because of, right, right, right. Because it's not staffed in that way. Okay. But um, at least it will give the the general public. I bet there's a lot of people that will walk through there for the first time.
Um, I did want to point out to um, Carrie, since she is the friends um, kind of liaison here, that I will reach out to Mary Ann and talk to her about what we can do to set up. Um, you know, we saw how things can get moved around um, during non-library hours and rearrange things to um, to have a spot for the friends to sell book bundles.
Thank you so much, Debbie. That's.
Coordinating times that we might be able to come up on a Sunday or something to get books out of the storage space um, to make that work.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
All right. And um, Library Trustees Authority, this was, this was pursuant to the um, everyone get the, everyone get the legal opinion from from Labor Council um, regarding this? I forwarded it to everyone. It it basically reaffirmed uh, the analysis, um, um, well, not reaffirmed, but but took the analysis of uh, Mark Terry is his name. Um, between the the bylaws, the charter and the state law, landing on the conclusion that um, the library de- uh, director appointment evaluation and contractor within the purview of the trustees. Um, regardless of our, how it may have been done before, and regardless of how we would tweak either wording in our personnel bylaws or any uh, proposed contract to outline the day-to-day um, mechanics of this. Um, but I think that it had been something that was ambiguous, or at least in practice, it wasn't um, adhered to. Um, and so did anyone have any questions about that? It was just, is something where in my own opinion, um, and and maybe this is also to save money, because, you know, legal opinions are checked by the hour too, right? Um, that a lot of um, including legal opinions and things that there things get passed on in public meeting verbally, that this once gave an opinion about this and that, and I felt that, and I pushed the envelope, um, with our town administrator that um, that I would like to have a legal opinion, a written opinion on the clarification of um, my analysis of that email chain, um, that I had sent regarding, you know, who I thought it should be, okay, or had been, okay? Um, and so I think this is a sort of moving forward item uh, considering the director's current absence, um, and that we can, we can um, keep these discussions going in future meetings and in between meetings as far as what these um, uh, documents would would look like moving forward. Um, and and tweaking these. Right now, it's, there's various templates that I've shared with everyone, um, most of which are from um, uh, state resources. And so, um, you know, I guess we'll we'll move forward with, um, I believe, less ambiguity. Um, and this goes back to our prior discussions where um, there's a question of whether it was a, like evaluations were joint between the trustees and the town administrator and and um, they're not. So, um, so that's our purview. And I guess that's the way other towns have been generally doing things, but um, we've been doing things a bit differently in these parts for the past twelve years, so. Um, any, any comments on that at all?
Yeah, so I raised my hand again, Roger.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so.
Yes, Carrie.
So that, so that's interesting. So, so that means that we have the ability, if there's a um, to basically, we are the ones who decide on the library, the hiring decisions for the li- the library director.
The director, yes.
Which is contradicts what we were told by the previous town administrator, and I'm glad that we have it from, um, you know, we have it from an authoritative source now. So going forward, we know, um, you know, what what direction to take. So I guess just recently, you know, with our current library director, um, you know, the, as we all know, the current library director is on leave.
And I would, I would interrupt, I would interrupt you for a second, Carrie, to be very cautious about what what you say in 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 describing the situation, um, you know, in her absence. That's all. Um, so.
I just want, I I I don't think I'm gonna say anything controversial, but um, but just like, it's just really more of a kind of a policy procedure type of question. So so if the, so so the director, you know, is is on leave, you know, um, but that wasn't something that the trustees approved, that you, the, I believe the town administrator approved that, so.
And so, so I I what what happens is FMLA, um, federal FMLA is within the um, purview of the town administrator. That's my understanding. Um, whether I need to seek further written clarification, not sure. But um, my understanding is notwithstanding all of our authorities in these matters, that FMLA is a federal leave act.
Um, okay. And that makes sense that I don't have any issues with, obviously with, you know, with their, with.
So so there there's some of these, there could be some of these dual roles. In other words, some of these activities, depending on whether they're um, charter bylaw, state law, could intersect where we are sort of preempted by federal law regarding who um, those re- were uh, leave requests go through.
Okay.
As it was explained to me.
Okay. And so I I guess we're gonna have to really do a lot of work just to really define exactly, like, because our understanding of what our role is, is
Right.
different than what it had been in the past. So I think we need to, you know, work with Evan to understand exactly where is the line? So, you know, so this definitely is a one place, but then other things like they approving vacation time and, you know, you know.
I know. And we need, we need, we need to work on that. Um, we need to work on that. And and I will work behind the scenes to to sort of, as we had agreed by consensus, uh, to tweak language uh, or what these um, uh, eval- evaluate, um, evaluation documents or contractual documents uh, could look like. Um, but also, um, clarifying, um, you know, best practices regarding how an executive board um, w- uh, waves through the day-to-day aspects, you know, um, probably not much different than how a school committee uh, would oversee a superintendent. Um, but uh, so I I'll be keeping, um, um, you know, um, I'll be looking into these matters too, and and not to put Dr. Tashida on on the spot, but I I value your expertise and your background um, with your doctorate in law and policy. Is that the doctor, your your degree?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I I'm.
But I'm not a lawyer.
I know that. I know that. But you're, I I, but I I and and this isn't to disparage anyone else, but I I'm I'm just gonna point you out in particular that that I I think that, um, you're one, an individual who could if you assist me in the, in a, it it with the process of this all, I think that your your background um, is is your formal training and background is lends itself to this analysis. Um, I'm not sure what everyone else thinks about this, but I'm finding myself kind of like, I I feel that I may be in a little bit over my head to do this solo. I'm not sure if this requires a subcommittee, but but I I I value your perspective in in the process, you know, uh, this is going to require, um, a lot of process and and waiting through and comparing, contrasting what other towns do, um, and landing on some best practices, um, regarding evaluations, um, contracts and day-to-day administration. So unless anyone else wants to volunteer, um, um, to to sort of weigh in on these matters, um, I will concede that I think this is probably too much just for one person as we're, as this is something we absolutely, it's imperative that we really get our house in order really quickly in these matters to really just get the train back on the track. So. So I'm not, I'm not requesting that we have, you know, put together a subcommittee, but I I will, I will seek help in in this respect. I'm not a, you know, this one-man show. I I I when I started diving in, I realized how how much it wa- you know, how much involved, so. Um, so any help would would be um, welcome. So, um, um, open meeting law compliance update. All right. So Dr. Tashida had mentioned last meeting, and I had acted on, um, the consensus, you know, of the um, board that I would self-report a suspected open meeting violation that involved the very analysis um, of who appoints and evaluates and and um, contracts with the library director. And, um, so the um, the Attorney General's Office came back with something oddly enough, I didn't completely agree with, and I'll ask Dr. Tashida to weigh in on this, because um, you had gone to, I think it was um, a seminar with the state where they said if if someone um, even if the serial conversation doesn't exist, that if one person um, puts forth an opinion about a matter that could come before the board um, and then sends it to the rest of the board, um, then that would constitute deliberation, even if no one else weighed in, just me alone offering an opinion. In this case, i- it's a distinction without a difference where I went back and forth with Evan. Um, and and it was a reply to all situation to the trustees. And and so my reading of the open meeting law was that was a no-no. And um, Attorney General's Office came back with, thank you for the transparency in sending us the self-reporting complaint. However, you are not required to send one. We will log this, but will not perform any further action unless you want us to. And that was the Attorney General's Division of Open Government. Um, they didn't say, don't do it again. Um, I think it's a best practice not to have these discussions, which could lead into serial discussions. Um, but that's, that's where it landed. So I you have the complaint form that I sent, uh, that was copied to the trustees. I don't know, Debbie, if I had CC'd you on that. Um, but it was to the Division of Open Government of the Attorney General's Office, copied to town clerk, copied to trustees. Not sure if I copied you on that. But it basically said the the opinion was that it wasn't, um, it wasn't uh, necessary to report. Um, not, they did um, mention in an earlier email that there is no self-reporting mechanism for open meeting violations. Um, it's silent. So Dr. Tashida, um, I've rambled enough, so I will, I will yield the floor. So.
Hi. So, yes, I read what you sent. Um, I don't have it open in front of me right now. I was just trying to scroll and and I must have deleted it, but from what I remember, um, the report was that one person replied, if I'm remembering from last meeting, there was actually three replies from different people on that.
Oh, they were of of meeting, uh, trustees?
Uh, one from Evan and two from trustees.
Okay.
Other than you.
Oh, I thought there was just one other trustee other than me. Okay.
No. And so, um, but if there's no mechanism for, you know, self-reporting, no one else reported it, and you did, and the Attorney General came back, I think that my opinion on it is moot because they said, don't worry about it. And so we can just move on from it.
Right. Y- yeah. Yeah. Um, but I I will, I will say that it, um, looking back, uh, I at my own process, I I think that it was probably not uh, the best thing to do to either you know, that I I was trying to tee up a conversation. And so that was this bad form because it turned, it turned into a mess. You know what I mean? That that I was trying to be efficient by teeing up a conversation that was very detailed, that was an analysis that was trying to get to a point regarding the appointing authority and evaluation. And um, it turned into some replies and it it risked a serial conversation. In other words, people may not realize and follow the email chain, but then all of a sudden, we find out that four people weighed in. That's especially where we get into trouble. So it's probably just, in my opinion, the best practice to um, if we're going to send any information out, it's 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 informational and absent opinion. I I don't know if you have any further comments on that about best practices?
No, I mean, I I agree with you on that for best practices. And my assumption with their comment about there's no mechanism for self-reporting is that um, to file the complaint, it needs to be filed to the chair of that public body.
Correct.
So you, as the chair, can't really file against yourself. But a- again, they they said, we're all good and don't have to move forward with it. And so I think that at least for this case, we can put it to rest and move on.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, all right, uh, walkabout. John Babriski, um, tell me what's wrong and what's right, and we'll keep it short.
It's gonna be.
I'm being mindful. It's eight thirty. That's why.
Yeah, it's gonna be real short, uh, because the wrong is that I did not do the walkabout. Uh, I totally, I scheduled it wrong in my calendar, uh, and a bunch of other things were going on this week, and I did not reschedule it correctly to this Monday or Tuesday, as uh, I'd said I was gonna do. So um, what uh, what I'm gonna aim to do, though, is is get it done maybe in the next week or so. And then maybe I'll send out an email to the trustee uh, email list, um, not for discussion, but just for informational purposes, just to, um, and and maybe if, I don't know, if something does come up that's urgent, then we can take it from there. But I I'm gonna assume that there isn't anything that will need to be addressed immediately, and I could just probably wait until the next uh, um, next meeting.
Anyone have any comments um, of whether John should just wait and knock it off in November, or I don't know. I mean, we're right around the corner. We're already at the twenty-fifth. Um, do you want, do we want to give John a reprieve, maybe knock this off in the first week of November and then call in November's? I I mean.
That that's kind of what I was getting at was.
Okay.
Was I would just kind of do the one, but.
All right.
Stephanie, I think was had her hand up.
I'm sorry. I, you know what? I did, I'm gonna give Zuma a call and let them know that I just, these, this little teeny yellow hand. Dr. Tashida, please, you have the floor.
Um, so I was just gonna say, I've been really busy at work and haven't gotten to see Debbie and sign that paper. Um, so to save time, but also not ignore the walkabout, I'm happy to do it when I go in, um, to sign that paper. And if there's anything that
Oh, okay.
Well, I can just email a an update then, and then John doesn't have to worry about it or getting there in the next week.
That that would be, that would be fantastic. Um, and Carrie, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah. So, um, so thank you, Dr. Sarah and.
Yeah. So, um, so thank you, Dr. Sarah, and also to, to John, I'm fine with John differing to the next month. I also just wanted to point out, um, in preparation for the donor party for the capital campaign. Um, there was a lot of work done by Dana, John Anderson, um, and myself, um, preparing. There's a lot of cleaning that was done. Um, and you know, and you know, we really did look quite, you know. We really did spend a lot of time in, you know, working in the library. Um, so you know, I, I feel like there are some things. Like there is some staining on carpets that, you know, that we've, we've noticed, but in general, um, you know, there wasn't anything. Other than really, you know, just, um, maybe, you know, some new cleaning that needs to be done that you really jumped out at us.
All right. Thank you for doing that. Yeah. Um, so, so who's going to do the next walkabout? John or you, doctor?
Well, I think we just decided that John's still gonna do it for next month, but I will do a quick one while I'm. When I go to sign the paper.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Um, all right. So, uh, new business. Search for temporary interim director. That is now posted on the MBLC's website, the jobs website. Um, we weren't able to get anyone from Biblia attempts or the consultant names that MBLC gave to, um. William and Evan. So as of the twentieth last Friday, that's been on the job website of the Mass Board Library Commissioners. For one week through, um, the closing date, they're accepting applications. Through William is through Friday, the twenty-seventh at the end of business in the hopes that, um. They could move forward with an emergency hire. And my understanding is that emergency hires are under their purview, not ours. But anyway, um, yeah, I see Carrie, you had your hand up.
Yeah. You answered my question.
Yeah. And so, um. Yeah. And so it, it shows a range of thirty-eight, forty-nine to forty-three, fifty-five an hour. I guess they were required to do that. Like what the range was based on whatever step rate. Um, so, um, it's out there and, um, I'm hoping that. It gained some traction. So, um, and it basically said to the first week of January. So. If you want to go there, you can see the full, uh, listing of how that's described. Um, any questions on, um, the search? Yes, Debbie.
Um, William mentioned in our meeting with department heads last week that if that did not pan out. Then they were looking at possibly getting a retired town administrator, um, to fill in. So that was, that was another option as well.
Right. I think, yeah, as, as a, as an emergency hire. Sometimes is some flexibility needed regarding the MLS certification. I, I mean, having a masses library science for an, an assistant or, uh, a library director on a permanent basis is, is. Is, is a mandate. Um, but knowing that. It sounds like if there isn't someone Debbie, then maybe they have some contacts, I think is, is, am I. Am I understanding that right? That by opening up the candidate pool, if no one applies to the MBLC. That we could possibly and hopefully land on someone.
Um, they, they do have some people that they have in mind for that as far as retired town administrators. Um, the question with us is, um. I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know where the line is between like why you get a retired town. It, it's not sitting well with staff.
Okay.
Just because like if this, I understand from their point of view that Mary Laurie is picking up slack. William Blake is pick, picking up a lot of slack and it is on the administration side that has to do with the town. So maybe that's where they're, they're trying to thought is, um, and we're handling the library side of it. And I say we, in terms of department heads, I don't know the library side of it. Um, I'm doing administrative as much as I can do. Um, and then I'm working with William, working with Mary to get the things done, um, that Beth would typically do. Um, but I, I don't know that it's. There, there are concerns about a town, a retired, it seems, it seems like a stretch. So I, I don't know.
But again, we're talking, we're talking about a temporary emergency hire. I, so we'll, we'll, we'll see. Um, I'm, I'm crossing my fingers that someone, um, within library circles. Who has either been a library director or an assistant library director. That was one of the, um, uh, things in the job description. MLS and experience in the past as, and as a, as a library director or an assistant library director. So knock on wood. Some people will apply. So, and then hoping that, that, um. That if no one applies and there may be someone that is less within library circles. With the different background that hopefully there's not much fallout from that. I, I think we're entering budget season. And I think that may be a consideration, um, to really address some of these things. So, um, you know, I'll double back. With William on, on Friday and see if, if there are, um. There are, um, applications. So.
And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, like the town administrators, the current town administrators are. Are fulfilling that role. So moving to a former town administrator. Or someone with similar qualifications in the interim, to me, that makes sense. If, if anything, just to offload. The work from our normal town, town administrator so that he can resume his normal duties.
Yeah.
Um, I know it's not ideal, but.
No, and I, I agree. And, and I, and Debbie, I, I think, did you start to have your hand up? I don't know.
Yeah, I kinda, I'm off, I'm off screen. I think that the question was asked too, if they had considered temporarily promoting someone. Who's been here for a number of years and that type of thing. And the response was that, um, they would like to bring in someone from the outside. Because they have heard that there's, um, tension in the staff or something. And I don't know if it's that, that they want. A third-party observer, but everybody is, I just want to put this out there wherever this fits in tonight is that. Every person is pitching in. Everybody is doing what they need to do to get the library running, um, to keep things running smoothly. Everybody is just, we really have seen zero disruption in service. We've had no real problems. The issues there have been things that we have discovered that have fallen through the cracks in recent months. And we are working to get those things, um, taken care of. But everything is running very, very smoothly right now. And that's just the, um. That's just a testament to how wonderful the staff is and how willing they are to, to pitch in and how much they just love. We love each other and the institution of the library that, that people are, are jumping in. And what can I do today? And how can I help?
Right. All right. And I, I couldn't, uh, agree with you more. Um, everyone really picked up. And then took, picked up the ball and rolled with it. And so, um, yeah, great teamwork. So moving from the temporary interim director to appointing a CW Mars coordinator. Debbie, what, what, what is, what is?
Okay.
CW Mars coordinator.
The director serves as the coordinator with CW Mars. If you're aware, CW Mars is our larger organization. Um, and we, we just need the board to, uh, decide that a person on staff. Is going to be that interim coordinator until either Beth returns or there is another director. Um, the head of borrower services, Cara Disindollet has volunteered to do that, but it needs to be appointed and communicated by the trustees.
Is, is there anybody else who is interested in the position?
Here is the one that does all that work. So.
Okay.
So let me, let me ask you this. Um. Debbie, um. Cara, union? I mean, what, I, we don't have any purview over union employees.
This doesn't have anything to do with the union. This just, this just literally, I just need you guys to sign off on the fact that you trust Cara. To communicate with CW Mars in Beth's absence. That's literally all that needs to happen right now.
Okay. Yeah, Dana.
What, uh, I'm sorry. What is that involved? Do we know?
It's just literally they, CW Mars will not communicate with someone that's not the coordinator. And we need someone to communicate with the network.
And what, but what would they be communicating about?
Um, with coordinating, um, I, to be honest, I'm not, I don't do much with the library side of that. It's nothing that has to do with funding and it's, it's more about circulation and staying current in the library system. But they need it to come from the trustees that she is on leave and that Cara is acting in her place for the next couple of months.
All right. So what would a motion look? And, and does that add to her duties? In other words.
She's fine with that.
All right. Does that need to be formalized through the union?
No.
But she's a union employee, right?
But why not? We don't want to do anything we shouldn't do.
Because we've been told.
Right now, we don't have that communication with the network that we need. And she's agreeing to do this temporarily. If something were to happen and, um, I think it's a fairly low. Low responsibility activity. Uh, it's a fairly low responsibility title, but she need, just needs the board to sign off that. She is the person that does that in Beth's absence.
Carrie.
Has, uh, so, um, so, uh, so I, I agree that we need to have this person, we need to have somebody appointed. Uh, we just don't want to get in trouble with, you know, the, with the, the union. Um, has Evan or William like. You know, been asked or whether it, it's okay because, you know, this is one of the challenging things. Uh, for, for us is that we're not privy to any of the union negotiations. We don't know what the status is. So. We don't know, you know, what, whether or not we would be in any kind of violation.
We don't have a contract yet. Uh, them, them looking over the contract has slowed down due to the town meeting. Um, so she's technically not even under contract at this point. She's volunteering to do it. And actually not having someone in this position is impeding some of our, our ability to communicate with the network.
So is there the, whoever the union rep is in the library, are they okay with it?
Yes. Well, I mean, the, the thing is that we say like, is the union okay with it? We are the union. So like, she's volunteering to do that.
All right. But I didn't know it, it needed to go through the person on site. In other words, the union rep on site. I just wanted to make sure we were.
Sarah's in those meetings where Cara has volunteered to do this.
Okay. All right. Um, what's Cara's last name?
Disindollet. It's D Z I N D O L E T. And I can send you the, um, email address. Um, should this go through that, of who to contact?
All right. So what would, what would a motion look like? Um, I, I guess I will like, accept. A motion to appoint Cara, how do you pronounce her name?
Cara Disindollet.
Did, all right. I will accept the motion to, uh, point Cara Disindollet. As the interim CW Mars coordinator of the library.
Oh, I'll make a motion to accept Karen Disindollet as the interim CW Mars coordinator.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who said, oh, okay. Doc, Dr. Tashida, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All, all, all those in favor by roll call. John Babrowski.
Aye.
Dana Wilson.
I'm not in favor.
Okay. All right. Um. Um, Dr. Tashida.
Aye.
Carrie Hogan.
Aye.
For hand, I declare the motion carried for in favor, one opposed. Teen gaming room flooring. Debbie, please give me good news, give us good news, but.
Um, I just wanted to bring this up because, um, in the past, we discussed the food and beverage policy. The teen room, um. Teen department had requested that, um, it be added to the policy that kids be required to stay in the maker space. With food and beverages. And then the, the discussion here was no, uh, because the computers are in there. And then we said the carpet is trashed just to make you aware as something to consider in the future. Um, the flooring that's being replaced in the children's program room and the children's workroom is a very expensive. Specific type of flooring that is not going to be put back down. Um, apparently there are issues of finding people who install it. So it's, it's going to be replaced with vinyl plank flooring that is more cost-effective. So we will have a credit. For flooring that could possibly be used to replace the carpet in the teen gaming room in the future. I can let you know when more information is available.
All right. Thank you. Um, so this is more sturdy, more versatile?
It's a vinyl plank flooring. The carpet would come up and that way it could be mopped daily.
That would be nice. Um. All right. Awesome. Any further, uh, gaming room floor? Okay. Update arris report. Uh, got some good news. Um, so there was. The, I guess the accounts that, the reimbursement accounts for the project bear interest. Okay. And we overlooked on the arris report, um, logging. Or documenting three hundred, I think it was three oh seven seventy-nine in interest. And I contacted the MBLC and they said, it's such a small amount. Don't worry about it. Just. In next year, in next year's report, this place that we could just add prior, prior year interest. And we wouldn't have to file an amendment to the arris report. So that's good because that's, um, that's our. Our state, state funding, our state funding, um, was it like ninety thousand? So. That is not compromised. So they gave us a reprieve on that. We just need to remember somewhere to put that in next year. So, um. Update, open meeting law compliance. That's a duplicate of three J. Who's this? I think, I don't know whether we discussed this Debbie about where it should go, but we've already discussed it. So. All right. On policy update, I guess, Aaron, unless you have an update, um. Debbie, um, I guess we table this. Or do you have an update?
Briefly, I spoke to John and Aaron a couple of weeks ago when, uh, Beth's leave began. And the, uh, the consensus was to basically kind of look at the policies that we have. That need to just be updated as opposed to crafting new policy, um, working on those for the time being. And Beth did have it indicated in her notes that she would like these meetings to continue. So, um, we can take a look. John, Aaron and I can communicate and take a look at our schedule and set up the next meeting and take a look at policies that exist that just need to be updated.
So, so, all right. So the subcommittee is John and Aaron and it used to be Doug and Aaron or no?
John, Aaron, Beth and myself.
Okay. All right. Get the, all right. I always get the membership on this confused. Um, all right.
Yeah, I'll just put, um, we, we also spoke a, a little bit about this Debbie and, um, I think I did suggest like if we wanted to. Uh, if we wanted to take a stab at some new policies, I'm fine with that too, because you know, we can draw on. Um, existing policies from other libraries and stuff like that. So maybe Aaron or I could do that, but may, maybe we'll just start with the updates. And then, and then see where we need to go.
So are the updates, let me ask you, John, are the updates, um, who puts the updates on the website?
I think Beth or.
Debbie, who, who does that?
For policies?
Approved policies like amend, when they're amended and then a new date and amended date. We've approved some recently. Are those up and running on the website as current?
Most likely no.
Okay.
Um, I can have, um, Jen McNeil in the children's department has been wonderful in keeping some of the, uh, website stuff up to date.
Okay.
Recent weeks. So I can ask her to take a look and, and check that out tomorrow if she's in tomorrow. Not sure.
I appreciate that. And the, the other, uh, question I had is, and I'm pretty sure this is regarding policy. Yeah, it is. Um. We are on a website, the dot org website. I, I know that. Um, when documents are loaded onto the, the, the main graph and website. PDFs are loaded up and that they're publicly accessible. Um, so. Can that be done or is it right now? I guess they're in like a drive, like a Google Drive? Am I right about that? Or are they just, I thought there was, I, there were like two levels of login. That made it, I, I found it frustrating to, to locate all the documents. Or was maybe, maybe I'm misspeaking and it was, um. locate all the documents. Or was maybe, maybe I'm misspeaking and it was um, the prior uh, the documents regarding um, the long range planning and, and action items? Of the, so I don't want to get into that. It's not an agenda item, but the policy updates. I mean, the, the thirty or so policies of the Grafton Library, are those just one click opens up or is that?
I, I don't know. I can take a look into that.
Yeah, I just, it, there was part of the website. If it's not that, it, it may be other areas that require like um, some type of ac- activity. Yes, Dr. Teshada.
Just to save some time, um, if you go to Grafton Public Library for policies, um, it has a list of the approved policies and they're all one click.
They're all one click? Okay. Then I may have misspoken. It may be the, um, it may be the other stuff. Dana?
I just tried to get on one. I couldn't get on one.
Yeah, uh, it, it looks like there might be like, we, we might need to do a permissions check Debbie on like the files.
Yeah, cause I, I just tried it. I couldn't get on one. It was one of the recent, was the first one on. I just thought I would look.
Yeah, one, one of the first two appeals process or art, uh, I think it was the art exhibit one, art exhibit requires you to request access to it. So I think the permissions just aren't updated, but they are on, on our Google Drive presumably somewhere and you just click in it, it comes up.
Alright. Alright.
So someone does need to look into that.
Yeah, that would be great. I just, it just was frustrating, you know, I, and I, I was maybe kind of waiting out in my own head about data loss, whether the outlook or any other systems upgrade would, would compromise data and, and, and it got me to thinking like what's, you know, as a trustee, I, you know, I have not read every word of all those policies and I'm overdue on that. But when I did start to read, I found it kind of challenging to navigate some parts of it, but um, alright, directors' reports and stats, um, so that was for September. So, but did you finish that off Debbie or was that all?
Uh, that was, I finished that. Um, and that has been, you should have the finished copy in the meeting packet.
Yes.
Posted to the website. Um, if there, and there's no discussion on that. I have a two other issues that, um, that I just wanted to men, two other things I wanted to mention that go fall under kind of like what Beth would normally tell you in this timeframe.
Okay.
Unless there's something about.
I, I had no comments. Does anyone else have any comments about the director report for September? Uh, yes, Carrie.
I, I just have a question, um, Debbie, um, just with regards to um, open positions. Um, I know, you know, I know that we have, um, you know, staff, staffing, you know, shortages, especially with, you know, Beth being out. Um, are all of the open positions now posted so people can apply on them or are there still some that we're waiting to have posted?
That's a perfect segue, Carrie. Thank you. That's on my list.
I was thinking of Maryland's hours, but that, yeah.
Um, we have, um, we do have a vacant position in the children's room and to be honest, the only thing really saving us right now is that the children's room is closed. Otherwise we'd be terribly short staffed. Um, we do have temps filling that in right now, but we have gotten clearance from William Blake to post. Um, we have had another employee go down by four hours. So what we're going to be doing is posting two eight hour positions. One will be Monday, one will be Thursday, and then they will alternate Friday and Saturday, two to six P M shifts. Those are our hardest to fill. Nobody wants to work two to six P M period, much less do they want to do it Friday and Saturday every week. So we're going to create two positions. Um, William has given us clearance to do that. We just needed official word from the employee who's dropping hours and we just got that. So that'll be going up shortly. We've been given permission to go ahead and um, post that and just to fill that in the timeframe that the town has designated. We also, just to keep things interesting around here, um, on the sixteenth of October, Cynthia O'Neill, our tech services, um, person gave her two weeks notice. She has been given a wonderful opportunity with CW Mars, um, which is our network and it's a wonderful opportunity for her. She's, she's fairly, um, she's starting out her career. And that's a move that she's excited to make and we're excited for her. The thing with tech services is it's very, very specialized. Um, and it's not an easy position to learn. So we spoke with William Blake last week. Um, and immediately upon hearing that she'd given her two weeks, myself, Sarah Banister, who's head of children's and Cara Disindollet, head of borrower services, got together and started brainstorming. I mean, I'm not in, within ten minutes, we were like, what do we do? Because this position cannot go unfilled. Um, she's the person who catalogs all the new books. She's the person who's in charge of ordering. She's the person who keeps us in compliance with the state so that we're spending the proper amount of money to keep our collections up to date. So what we have done, um, is the department had spoke to their staff members and brought us names of anyone that might be interested in that position. We spoke to William Blake. Um, they are, William approved an internal posting of the position. Um, that has to be posted for seven days. We did, we made an executive decision that they said in hindsight was okay and that we already started training three people. Um, while Cynthia is here, uh, they've been training all week so that there will be no laps in service to the patrons. And we won't fall behind on any ordering, anything like that. Um, and these three staff members have agreed to take on this training to keep the library up and running regardless of whether or not they end up in the position, which is pretty outstanding. Um, so that's where we are with that one. Um, another thing that Beth would probably tell you about at this point that you should probably be aware of. Um, I'm not sure, Roger and I had spoken briefly about incident reports and I'm not a hundred percent sure what Beth's procedure was for sending out incident reports, but we did have an incident with a verbal altercation between patrons last week that almost ended in a physical altercation. Um, police were called. They, they took statements from both of the gentlemen. Both of the patrons were escorted um, out of the building. The staff did an absolutely amazing job of handling the situation. We had, um, and I, I mean, I hate to say it like this, but we had male patrons who stood by um, as things were sort of unfolding and we were trying to get the gentleman calmed down, um, to keep everyone safe. Because if we're just going to call a spade a spade, this is a staff of women, you know, and they were, the, the gentlemen are very concerned and they, they stood by and checked to make sure that everybody was okay. And the police got them out and um, the, the fact of the matter is, is that the staff handled it as we've been trying to handle it. Um, and the situation could have been avoided. The gentlemen were arguing. They were both at public computers. So that's why we said that maybe putting off this laptop rollout is not the best idea. Maybe we should look into that. So we're going to try to put that back on the table so people can spread out a little bit. They were just both having a bad day and they both got on each other's nerves and somebody said something and somebody said something else. And the next thing you know, there's screaming and shouting. We do have, um, Sean O'Connell is our part-time associate in the teen department after school and he's actually a high school teacher and he's actually been a bouncer. He came up and he helped out with the situation too, but it was, it was one of those things that we hear about happening, but we've never had it happen here that we know of. And it was, it was all handled by, the police were called and we did, so we did make sure to let, you know, Evan and William know, um, and the town knows. I thought I'd let you guys know as well, but um, kudos to the staff that were, were on top of it. And that's all that I had on that director's report section.
Public input, I'm not seeing anyone in the public. Next meeting's, um, policy subcommittee to.
Oh, uh, could I, uh, could I ask a quick question of Debbie? Uh, I spoke, I spoke with someone yesterday and I think their meeting room signup didn't like get approved or whatever. Um, it may have been from a while ago, so I don't think it's like a new thing since Beth uh, has, has gone leave, but I just wanted to make sure like we have other people who can approve the, the meeting uh, requests, the meeting room reservation requests, right?
Yeah, um, what typically comes through is that through the admin office, Beth and I approved community room and conference room only. And I actually saw some in there at one point months ago that were a different department and I approved them and they got mad. Um, so it, it does depend on the department and I did go down and ask. I, I saw one that was for a day that had passed and went down to that department the other day. It's, it's a tricky situation right now because we're all just we're all lovingly holding each other accountable. And I said, you know, I don't have any authority to say this, but this was not approved. And I, these patrons were never notified that they're, about their room reservation. Um, and just to be more aware of that. And that's one of the things that when I come in, I'm going to start looking at too. Um, the dust has kind of settled. It's been, you know, two and a half weeks, three weeks. And um, and things are actually starting to run a little bit more smoothly. Uh, that we're not, nobody, nobody was really in panic mode anyway, but you know, just a matter of getting our bearings and getting things running and, and everybody realizing, um, everybody's been wonderful with me because just from an administrative point of view, a lot of stuff fell on my desk and people have been great about taking things. Um, so we're going to try to make sure that that gets addressed first thing in the morning when people come in to check room reservations, whether or not it's their department. So.
Alright, great. Yeah, it, it wasn't a huge concern. I just wanted to make sure like it was, you know, that it just hadn't fallen through the cracks. That's all. Great.
Yeah, no, it did.
That's alright.
In full transparency, we missed it because things are a little bit, um, a little bit haywire, but we're actually, that was one of the things too that I think people are people in the past had been um, held to do for your own department and if it's not your department, then you don't touch it. Where now is like, we all know that we kind of need each other and we're leaning on each other a little bit more right now. So um, friendly reminders are going a lot further this time. Just be like, hey, by the way, I saw this and I didn't know if you guys caught it or not. Cause everybody is kind of taking on extra right now.
I see Carrie's hand up.
Yeah, so I, I just, I um, just wanted to say thank you again, Debbie. Like I know it's, it's difficult, you know, like the role that you're in and you know, thank you and the entire staff for pulling together, you know, um, to support the library operations. And also I just wanted to say kudos to how that um, situation was handled with the two patrons, um, that's, you know, commendable and please, you know, express our gratitude, you know, to, um, to all the staff and, um, and, and we're also appreciative to the Grafton Police as well. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so policy subcommittee. To be determined. Alright. Friends, Tuesday, November fourteenth at seven thirty via Zoom.
Yeah, yes, I, I did um, mention that earlier. Um, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Uh, trustees, we, we're meeting, I guess, a week earlier because of Thanksgiving. So, um, we have, oh, alright, so we have roommate, right? Yeah. Alright, cool. Alright, um, alright, item number ten, I put a placeholder in for executive session. I'd like to, I'd like to keep that on. Um, I know a lot of boards and committees, including select board, does um, keep that item on. Um, um, oh, um, before adjournment, I have a technical question for you, Debbie. So when we end this meeting, this recording is cloud based. Am I right? In other words, neither of us needs to download this onto our computer, does it? In other words, it goes to the cloud and then G C T V then edits it? How does that work?
I send it to Bob.
Okay, so I don't need to do anything?
You don't need to do anything. Nope.
Okay, alright, gotcha. Okay, um, alright, I will uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait a minute, before I do that, Carrie.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to come back again, um, just with regards to where we stand with the Union negotiations. Um, I just, I just don't feel clear as far as understanding like where we stand. Is that something that we could add to the agenda for next month's meeting? Just so we can have a, a better understanding of, of where things are going or, or Debbie, do you want to give us an update at this point?
I can sum it up in like fifteen seconds or less. The contract is done. The town is reviewing it. Uh, the Union is prepared to ratify it once it comes back from the town. The town, um, has not had a chance with the town meeting. Um, and some other things that they, they're working on it. And as soon as it's done and it comes back to us to, um, to ratify it. So it's, it's, negotiations are finished.
Alright.
That's awesome news. Thank you so much, Debbie.
Thank you, Deb, for, for, um, you know, I, it, it was not entirely clear to me how much information you were allowed to say in public, at, at what point, you know, or, or, but I guess now that the contract, the negotiations are you know, pretty much finalized, um, I guess when it's ratified, that becomes public document and, um, you know, um, and it should be on the town website and I guess library website thereafter. So um, I'm glad this is uh, where we've reached this point. So, awesome.
Okay. Okay.
So, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, by roll call, um, John Bobrowski.
Aye.
Dana Wilson.
Aye.
Dr. Teshada.
Aye.
Carrie Hogan.
Aye.
Trahan, I declare the motion carried. This meeting is adjourned at nine oh nine P M.